Good luck in the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God. In this world where there is no justice.
Welcome to our second regular meeting of the Village House Spa Board of Trustees on the September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the September ninth, twenty-twenty-four meeting be approved? Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No presentations, public comment. I just want to add for the fact that it's agenda items only that G should have in the blank, six thousand five hundred dollars and not to exceed. As the board was given the proposal last night and it was posted this morning, thanks to Jennifer, on the agenda portion of the village webpage. So now, public comment for agenda items only is allowed for three minutes per speaker. If you're on Zoom, this is the perfect time to raise your hand to speak. Otherwise, is there anybody in this room that would like to speak on an agenda item? Seeing none here and seeing nothing on Zoom? I guess we will, whoa, hold on, we have a leak in it, look like. Or not? We will assume no. We try. Hold on.
Christine. But then she went away. Hold on a second. Christine, did you want to say something?
Christine, if you want to say something.
I would like to say something, yes.
Name and address and then go ahead.
My name is Christine M. Fitzpatrick. I'm at thirty-one Chapman Street in Ballston Spa. I wanted to comment on the proposal for the employee handbook. And the price of it of sixty-five hundred. I want to compliment you on undertaking this. An employee handbook is a very useful and important thing to have. So your desire to take it on and deal with it is very, you know, that's very good. So the issue I have is that the handbook is somewhat, this is somewhat of a cart before the horse situation. Handbooks reflect policies. And I was looking through the index. And while there are certain policies, if you will, that you could, you can take from other entities, for example, your own harassment and discrimination policy was given originally was a statewide approved NYMR, I think it is, policy that I changed for and adapted for the Village of Ballston Spa. But you, and so there are a lot of situations where you can use a model, but you have to tailor it to your needs. And one of the, as I was looking through this index, it seems to me that there are a lot of policies in here and a lot of, you know, areas that were, if I recall now, this could have changed, that you do not have the policies. So the policies are the building blocks that then go into the handbook. So it looks to me like, and what, that this is insufficient. I would be concerned that you're going to get a canned handbook. You're going to get something that is not particular to what you are doing. For example, you have non-represented employees and then you have union employees, as you well know. Those policies have to be different, how they're handled in the handbook have to be different. And I'm sure you know that. I didn't see, you know, he, this, the proposal was sixty-five hundred dollars. I think that's insufficient for the fact that there are a number of policies that you're going to have to create from whole cloth. They're going to have to be, there's going to be a lot of work that's going to have to happen, even if your policies are verbal and then have to be put into writing. And I didn't see enough in a work plan to say, to cover that. So sixty-five hundred to me, and without a more robust work plan of how the person's actually going to go about this, I'm afraid that you're just going to get a canned, a product that is not tailored to the Village of Ballston Spa and what you are doing. And in certain areas, I think you're going to have to, if I may be so bold, work out what you're doing, put it in a policy and then, you know, put it in a handbook. Thank you very much for allowing me to comment.
Thanks, Christine. The, just as FYI, I did have a conversation with Mr. Travers, your traverse is I said, no relation, I'm Zoom. But he and I had a conversation about the union components and it frustrates the policies a little bit because got to make sure that you're consistent with union contracts and anything that's not discussed in the union contract falls back into the handbook to make sure the unions are on board with those types of situations. And so there's a lot of stuff that goes into this, or the interviews, obviously, with folks that are most aware of the existing policies or traditions. And, you know, what would be, what we need moving forward. He understands that we are in a start from scratch sort of mechanism right now and still priced at a sixty-five hundred dollars despite that knowledge. And so at this point, you know, I have that put in front of you. What was your, I just had a curiosity, I know it's a little early for this, but you had told me another municipality that you were working with had used some and what was the satisfaction level?
Yes, two of the municipalities that I represented work uses, one of them, they both had very good things to say. One of them adopted a handbook after, they had to do, they had to create new policies in the course of adopting the handbook. And the other one is in the draft right now and same thing, had to create policies. Right now, the draft handbook in this other municipality is ninety-nine pages. So, I mean, it's, they're comprehensive. I, you choose who you want. I just know that they've worked with these guys in the past.
I appreciate the fact that they're sort of public entity.
That's all they do.
Yeah, exactly. So this is not your type of scenario of the stuff that will be facing.
And the other municipalities do have unions as well.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no other hands or on Zoom, let us move forward. There is no consent agenda tonight. First time I've ever had to say that since we adopted consent agendas. So let's move forward. Can I get a motion that Carol Lang be appointed as a part-time court clerk? Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Price Bush, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion that the resignation of BBW Superintendent Jeffrey Garres be accepted effective December seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Price Bush, discussion? Absolutely. I'll talk more about that in the nearest announcements later, for sure. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion that Catherine Gilligan be appointed as a full-time BBW laborer effective immediately. Trustee Fandesa?
Second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion acknowledging that the required state audit of village court records was completed. Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Baskin? Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion to provide a new deadline for the Brownfield Opportunity Area Steering Committee applications of October fourth, twenty-twenty-four, with the anticipated date for approval of the committee members being October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Remember, as an aside, the Columbus, yeah, Columbus State Meeting, since Columbus Day is a holiday, will be on Tuesday, actually, that week, the fifteenth. Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Price Bush, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion that the attached plan for an additional stop sign be located at the intersection of Circo Ave and Penn Street be approved and implemented by the mayor via the Department of Public Works staff. Trustee Fandesa?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion?
I would just say, in that particular location, you would either have to take one out or put one in, and because of the curve in the road and the site distance issue, I agree with the idea to put an addition stop sign there.
Thanks, Sean. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion approving the retention of public sector HR consultants LLC to author a new village employment handbook slash manual for a fee not to exceed six thousand five hundred dollars. Trustee Fandesa? Trustee Baskin, discussion? Oh, go ahead.
I just, it's nice to see that on Wednesday I sent you the agenda item below, creation of written policies for benefits, I was like, title lunch, non-represented employees. And then on Friday, we see this agenda item from you. So thank you very much for that follow-up. It is appreciated.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Get a motion to authorize the Wiswol Park Sewer Project be left for bid. Bidding schedule is as follows for construction this fall. A, authorization from village to put project out to bid at the nine twenty-three, twenty-four meeting, that's tonight. B, advertisement goes out on the twenty-fifth of September, twenty-twenty-four. C, bid opening on October tenth, twenty-twenty-four at two P M. D, authorization from village to award to contractor at the October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. And E, agreement and notice to proceed execution week of October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Trustee Fandesa?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Three announcements tonight. Write notes here to. There we go. First off, I've been seeing contact with the DEC on Friday in a conference call regarding Ricketts. Bad news, good news situation of sorts. The bad news is that they have again found still more problems in testing and that they are going to need to do additional testing and possibly additional work to alleviate those problems. I did address two issues that we're seeing with the site, specifically seepage coming out onto the sidewalk area. We did have apparently a slip and fall on the Night Family Fun Day, and we've toned up that area since that point because some of the stuff coming off of the property onto there. I literally drove up there while I was on a conference call with them, hands free, don't worry, folks. And took photos of the site conditions in real time and sent them to them so they could see what I was talking about of that and also the overgrowth occurring on the property itself. They're going to be evaluating what to do with those issues. They're, so to the seepage issue, they have an idea of maybe boxing out the area somehow internally so that it's not going out onto the sidewalk area. They're a little less bullish about what they can do about the overgrowth, although I don't think they realized the extent of it until I sent the pictures. So they'll be getting back to me on that. In addition, they're going to make sure that all landowners in that area and residents will get notice of any other blasting type work that'll be done. And also, I did note to them that people well beyond what they usually do in their mail-out zone were complaining of the noise, et cetera. So we agreed to try to work to create a broader, you know, group of people that we're going to give a little bit warning to if we do have to go back in that direction. So the Ricketts property is still a little bit problematic, obviously, but we're working with DEC to try to get those at least temporary issues alleviated, then the permanent issue, they're working to get it alleviated as well. As you may have seen, we're beginning phase two of paving. And not to steal Sean's thunder, but I want to make sure that we, we're clear on streets here that are moving forward. Tomorrow and Wednesday is going to be the milling process of Prospect Hill and Prospect Street. And then the Forest Park area, that's Meadow Lane, Frederick and Crestline as well. So mill Tuesday and Wednesday, and then the work on final repairs over the next week or so, and to be paved next Tuesday and Wednesday, October first and second. Then a third phase where prep, you may have noticed, is already starting on these streets and Jeff always is a little bit queasy to give us the street names because he still wants a crunch budget to make sure we have enough budget to cover all these streets. But for now, we will assume the following will be the streets that will be covered in a couple of weeks with paving late October or early November. Those streets will be the east part of Van Buren Street, the east part of Ford Street, Mechanic Street, Penn Street, and Maple Avenue. Prep repairs, replacements take approximately two to three weeks and mill and paving will be, like I said, late October, early November. So that work to be done. As you noticed, Ballston Avenue looks great despite somebody deciding to drive over it during the paving process. And we would ask everybody to please be mature and, you know, understand that we give as much head notice as we can here to avoid those types of situations. Please don't do that. You know, it just ruins it for everybody ultimately when we have a road that starts being chopped up because we didn't let it cool sufficiently in that situation. Finally, as you saw in the motions, Jeff Garres did send in his resignation letter to be effective in December on December seventh, twenty-twenty-four. About a week and a half ago or so, I can't remember what it was. Yeah, I think it was a week and a half ago. And, you know, obviously, Jeff is a valued member of a, our staff, the, our community. His family has done an enormous amount for this community. We'll definitely be celebrating his contributions to the village moving forward when we get close to that December date. He's, you know, in that position where he's of an age where he could make that decision and it's a grueling amount of work to handle. And unfortunately, you know, we're going to lose him because he wants to enjoy life a little bit. So we wish him nothing but the best in that respect. The next steps are going to be interesting because having sat down with Scott Kearns, our working supervisor, crew leader, Glenn Bowers, and Jennifer as well, who basically is apportioned about half to be a BBW type administrator, whatever you want to look at, to assist with some of the budgeting, some of the volunteering, et cetera, moving forward. Jeff wasn't always using her in that cycle, so we wanted to see what we could get from all three of these folks if we want to move forward with a vacancy in superintendent and sort of go at it from a different angle. Because what we're looking at or seeing in the garage is a problem. While we did hire one person at a new higher rate of twenty dollars an hour, which was up from the eighteen range before, we are still way low on our labors with CDL positions to the tune of, I believe, Milton's going to be around twenty-six dollars an hour starting, and Ballston may be in the twenty-seven to twenty-eight dollar an hour range. So we're low on that end. We also don't have a system where we place value on somebody bringing in experience. We had somebody who had, I think, twenty years of experience of some format or another of BBW-like type of scenarios, that were working with sports facilities, which somewhat tantamount to some of the stuff that you do here. Yeah, we had no mechanism by which to give them accelerated rate or, you know, some kind of middle-type position to appreciate the fact they bring them. Our police contract, for instance, we just adopted last year was, yeah, about a year ago, right? Do you ever take? Time flies. That has a step ladder process. You bring us experience from other police forces, you get to start at higher rung of the ladder, ultimately. We don't have that in the BBW. So on Thursday, we are meeting reunion representation to discuss that aspect of things and also to take another look at the rates moving forward for starting salaries or starting our release especially. And then also talking about how to maybe realign the top level of the BBW garage moving forward. Nothing's for sure. We're still sketching this out, but I just wanted to point out that we are noticing some huge deficiencies that we need to fix because otherwise, we've got four guys ready to retire over the next few years. We've got three openings, now two thankfully, due to tonight's agenda item, but that, that's just creating a big, big future void possibility. And we need to do something to make this garage a little bit more future-proof than what it is currently. That's all I have. Let's go to the liaison reports. We will start with Sean, who's thunder I stole. I'm sorry about that.
Yes.
Judge Treasury. Sorry. It's on file. So just go ahead.
So what Frank said? Yeah, there's the three phases, as Mayor Rossi mentioned, and the only thing I'll add there is that Jeff mentioned that immediately following paving season will be winterizing hydrants and preparing for leaf picking. So that's probably going to be early November or middle November when that actually happens. So I would be cognizant of that. If you're going to put your leaves out in October, they're going to be sitting there for a month. So and obviously, they don't always stay put. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Mary?
Reminder that Storytime at the library is being held at the ACC on Thursdays at ten from the gym and they think that it'll be there until the case is done, so probably until early April. They're also hosting a pumpkin themed contest. Literally themed. And you can decorate a pumpkin to resemble your favorite book character. Sounds like a lot of fun. They just asked that no carved pumpkins because they don't hold up very well. But you can drop them off October fifth through sixteen and patrons will vote on them and winners will be announced on October twenty-ninth. Oh, Castle Farmers gift cards will be given out as prizes. And the bidding for Phase One A is under review for the architects. Friends of the library will be out in the parking lot back here during the car show on October thirteenth. So stop by and support the raffle. Carol Beal's donated her husband's a car coat, which I'm going to guess is like more athletic car coat, not formal car coat. Driving gloves.
Guess so.
So if you want to stop by and enter to win that. And the events committee is working on Breakfast with Santa, which will be held on Saturday, December seventh, and the menorah lighting in Wiswol Park to be held on December twenty-fifth. And more information on those will be coming.
Just to not give complete short trip to Treasury's report, in it is a listing of major revenues received that those, you can see from the attachments. Just a reminder, utility payments, we've ceased collecting utility payments. For now, as we're preparing to re-lovey the utilities, not paid to the corresponding town, to be placed on their tax bills. And there's also a summary of sales tax receipts as well. So if you want to see that, that is in our attachments on the website. Bring it up.
All right, just some briefs. The Business Association, as Mary mentioned there, it's going to be on October thirteenth, excuse me, the car show will be on October thirteenth. They're working really hard to plan and prepare for that and will always take additional volunteers. Email dina@ballston.org if you are interested. Reminder to folks that the farmers market is extended this year. It goes until October fifth, so that's two more weekends. So Thursday, it's open forty-seven, and then Saturday, nine to one P M. And they have those winter splashes now, so it's a good time to come out, as well as apples. And then for Arts Committee, just very briefly on the grant, Sertor Arts Grant will be due on November twenty-second. I told our committee chairs that they wanted to get us a slate of projects that the village could like sponsor, be a fiscal sponsor, to get us their selections for the number, for the November twelfth meeting. So again, there are things due the twenty-second, so I just made it pretty clear, we need some time to approve it and not have everybody rush because there's paperwork that Carla, Frank, and I need to work on. And so hopefully some good projects will come out of that. So, thanks.
And Ben?
Just to continue with the Committee on the Arts, there is a Sertor Arts Grant Project Make and Take collage class on October twenty-sixth. Printmaking on November second and alcohol ink and tile on November ninth, twelve to three P M. Brookside is in the three at the register. So go to Committee on the Arts Facebook page or then on the website. There's also Sounds in Winter coming up, turning into an annual event, again, helped by the Sertor Arts Grant and also funding from the village. The first one is November sixteenth at six P M. Brookside. It's called String Wind, Flute and Celtic Harp Duet. Sounds very beautiful. There's also going to be one on January eighteenth. The group is T V D. And then on February eighth, six P M, all six P M, Michael, Emery, and friends. Let's see, they are asking the village board, I guess Frank had burned that for guidance on collecting money, registration, selling tickets. Wondering if they can use clover like the village pool does. So they're looking for some feedback on that, whenever you are able to do that. And their next meeting is October second at the Real McCoy. They're also waiting for a permanent location from Frank on where they should be now that once the library space is no longer available. So for that. The Park and Tree Board, they're working on organizing a street tree walk where residents can learn about proper fall pruning and tree wrapping. It'll increase wildlife survival for young street trees. They will add more on that soon. They will, they are also working on a consolidated parks rule list for posting in those parks to increase the safety enjoyment of residents. Their next meeting is Tuesday, October fifteenth at seven P M. At the Cornell Cooperative Extension Conference. The other information I'd like to share is CareLinks, which is a volunteer senior program, four seniors, that we support the village. They're having a interactive senior resource fair Wednesday, October twenty-third, eleven to two P M. At the Shenandoah United Methodist Church. Local businesses and organizations will be present to share resources they offer, as well as members of the CareLinks team will be available to answer questions about serving the needs of seniors in Southern Sertor County. You know, the special presentations by Albany Guardian Society and All Sign Association, Choice Connections of New York, Landville Funeral Home, Chris on Law Firm, and Berkshire Athletic Home Services. It's going to be free admission, light impressions open to the public. So again, that is eleven to two, October twenty-third, Shenandoah United Methodist Church. If you're interested in that.
You done? Do you want to add one thing? Are you done?
Yeah.
I had a meeting with Caitlin Carwana and Chris Williams of our Park and Tree Board around, we started where one ninety-nine Milton Avenue is, which is where our partners said building there next to the church. And we recently had to take the tree down. It was a, I believe, an ash tree which had a Dutch elm scenario that unfortunately needed to be taken down. What Chris pointed out was that there are several other ash trees all along that side of the street that are similar issues where over the next twenty months, they'll probably all cease to be viable. And we began to talk about how to approach that. For whatever reason, the tree grant that we received, no, notice of this year did not include that part of Milton Avenue. And so that will have to come out of our pockets. It's becoming emergent what's going on with some of those trees. And so if those get taken down and we do replacements there, we'll have to pay for those ourselves. We did also look at higher up, or I guess, brook south on Milton Avenue, the old heating sidewalk trick that's going on with the old trees planted by DOT. And we kind of took a, you know, shot at what the best approach would be overall. Because obviously, you know, things are a little bit awkward there with some of the sidewalks on both sides of the street. How do you approach it? And so Chris is working to kind of, with Caitlin, come up with some approaches. My spitball view of things was one year, attack one side of the street where we take out any trees that need to be taken out, redo the sidewalks where they need to be redone, and get everything back into level, pegging there with the sidewalk and replant anything necessary. And then take the same tack the next year on the other side of the street. So over two years, basically mobilize, work with the state because we'll have to to get this kind of work done because we'll be in the street to do some of it. And more or less attack what has been a pervasive problem here in an orderly fashion to try to get safety back into Milton Avenue especially. And some of the grant money can be utilized for that portion of the street because it was geared toward that end of that street. So it's something to think about. There'll be more to be heard on that down the line. That doesn't mean we'll replace every tree we take down, but we obviously have to replace some of the trees we take down because obviously it'll change the entire characteristic of the street if we don't. So we also have to find trees that don't have the same root system issues ultimately too, and that's what Park and Tree works with us to do as well. So So fruitful meeting, discussion that will hopefully lead to a good process moving forward. No old business, new business Ben had alluded to. I'm not sure if you want to pursue it further or not.
Well, since you provided a solution to my issue that I put forward on Wednesday. It's basically been covered by the prior motion, I think. And subsequent agendas, if you are intending to do that, you can easily contact me and let me know. And we don't have to have basically the same motion twice on here. So I'm fine moving on.
Oh, comment on any issue, three minutes, one sec. Three minutes for person. You won't be first, so you got that. This is where I remind everybody, it's a good time, if you're on Zoom, to range your hand when you have one hand up there already, but we'll get to you in a second. As we only did our hand up first here. So three minutes on any topic and again, name, address and go right ahead. Thank you. Make sure, yeah, you have to do that. Just hold the button.
Marilyn Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. I'm a member of the zoning advisory committee and I just wanted to let everybody on the trustee board and in the village know that it was just decided in the last two hours that the zoning advisory committee will conduct their public zoning workshop on October fifteenth from seven to nine P M. At fifty West High Street. Chris Kushel is the village's rezoning consultant. He is from Fisher and Associates. He's from the Rochester area, but not originally. But he's going to conduct this public rezoning workshop at fifty West High Street, which is the Cornell Cooperative Extension Auditorium. He will do that again on October fifteenth, seven to nine P M. He is going to present a high level, but short update on the rezoning process. He will provide us with a timeline for rezoning and will answer some very basic questions about the process, zoning in general, and any questions that the audience may have. This will then be followed by an open house style workshop. As Chris has described it, the public will review some rezoning topic boards that our consultant has prepared and that the zoning advisory committee is in the process of quickly reviewing right now. Those boards will discuss various rezoning topics, things that have come up in a discussion that Chris has had. And also things from, that carry through from our comprehensive plan. Once those boards are developed during the meeting, again, this open style opportunity to look at these boards and to ask questions of the zoning advisory committee members who will be staffing each board on an easel. And an opportunity for feedback from the public about those zoning topics. And some of the topics will relate to current topics that are out there like accessory dwelling units or what should the downtown business district look like in terms of future development. Members of the zoning advisory committee will actually discuss the content, collect that feedback and hopefully explain to the public, you know, what we're looking at and collect their feedback. So because we've had an abrupt about face on the date, we need the assistance of not only the village board, but everybody hearing this word to get the word out to your neighbors within the village of Balsam Spa to contact everyone you know to let them know about this public zoning workshop.
Your three minute turbo, we also have something for you, so maybe give you a little more time to throw back.
So Marilyn, are village meetings the fifteenth? Is there any possibility that you're, I highly recommend it.
Unfortunately, we have not seen Chris in person since April. Chris is not accustomed to attending our meetings on a regular basis. I've been told by the chairman of the ZAC that, you know, Chris would like to attend more meetings, but it might require an amendment of the current contract we have with him. He is supposed to be attending one of our meetings either in person or on Zoom every month. And he has not done that for many months. Last time he was in person was April, early April, when we gave him a tour of the village in preparation for preparing this first draft. So unfortunately, we had the meeting scheduled for a date in October. It was just before the long holiday weekend. Suddenly, things turned around and I had four other dates I had to chase down, several of which Chris is not available for. This is the only day he said he was available for. And we're in the process of apparently trying to get all of the other zoning advisory committee members to agree that they'll show up for this meeting. And we got the bare minimum just two hours ago, unfortunately. So we are having to do this when Chris, our consultant, will physically be.
What are the hours of meeting?
Seven to nine P M. Is when the public will be coming to the meeting, so.
Is there, is there a way to possibly start you at seven thirty and half, two to six thirty, start, try to get an hour meeting in for the village?
You know, I can't make that decision because it's a committee. And we can at least ask the chairperson to think about that. But unfortunately, because we have, I think we have at least six months that we have to go through. That's asking a lot of the public to stay an additional half hour to hear Chris. But we, you can, why don't you put something in writing so we can get it back to the zoning advisory board?
I have to do a motion now to move our meeting. That's, that's a problem.
And just so you know, here's, here's the problem right now. We, the committee had asked earlier for the village to notify people that this meeting was even coming up. And now we're at a desperate state where we have to do publicity right now because the meeting has been moved from where it should have been to an earlier date. So we're scrambling to get the word out.
Is there, is there, is there, I almost feel like if you give yourselves a little more time, like he was not available past that. I'm a little confused. I feel like there's.
Yeah, there's no confusion. We have to deal with the dates. He told us he's not consistently attending.
Carla has a good possibility here. I would move that we would have, well, we have to do something now with the recognition of the fact that we have a conundrum here. So we could do something to protect ourselves right now and then.
No, no, we just need to get the press release out tomorrow, which is what I'm hoping to do.
Folks, let me, let me propose something here. I'd like to make two motions. I'm not making it actively. I'm just suggesting it here. That we have a meeting scheduled for October seventh, twenty twenty four, at seven P M. For the first regular board meeting for the village of Balsam Spa or trustees in the month of October. And well, I would keep the fifteenth there and also make a motion to have that meeting begin at six thirty P M. And what we can do is if we do go through with the meeting on the seventh, we can vote to cancel the fifteenth meeting ultimately. So that they can move forward without any problems on the fifteenth with us kind of overlapping. This way, we would be able to over the next few days determine what the correct course of action is time wise and have a backup plan for ourselves that way.
I mean, I understand that the possibility of cancel.
We wouldn't have three meetings unless we absolutely needed to do something. We still have the October first situation too, which is there just a D L D possibilities right now. D L D being the spring for the library to get that and get the bid, bid stuff squared away.
You don't want to just move the meeting back a day, the sixteen?
No, I think that causes even bigger problems for some other people too. So I think going to a Monday situation isn't the worst idea. And then also protecting ourselves on the fifteenth, for some reason, we have an issue there. We always have fifteen lined up still. So can I get a motion to schedule the first regular board meeting for the village of Balsam Spa's board of trustees in the month of October twenty twenty four, on October seventh, twenty twenty four at seven P M. In a location to be named. Trustee Fandanza. I go to trustee Raymond. Discussion, anybody with a desire to give ninety seconds worth of speech on this? Seeing none, all favor. Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion rescheduling the current meeting for the board of trustees on October fifteenth, twenty twenty three, originally slated for seven P M. To begin at six thirty P M. If necessary. Trustee Fandanza. Discussion, again, anybody? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. So let's, let's communicate and I'll pay also Matt to make sure that we're all on the same page.
So if I can just finish the statement, we need to get the word out about this meeting. Please contact everyone you know to let them know about this public zoning workshop. Mark your calendar for this first public workshop. And just so that folks know, the zoning advisory committee meets at the first and third Thursday of each month from seven to eight P M. At fifty West High Street. And I would encourage everyone who lives in the village, owns property in the village, cares about the village to attend those meetings on a regular basis to find out what's going on.
Thanks, ma'am. Anybody else in the room? Gary?
Yep. Apparently my phone buddy was calling for the digital assistant. I said your name. I was not saying that.
Hello. Gary Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. I am the vice chair of the Historic District Commission. And last Thursday, I attended a meeting of the zoning advisory committee, which is the group, the advisory group appointed by the trustees last year to work on with the private consultant to update the village zoning code. I want to set the record straight in terms of what is happening with the zoning advisory committee and their proposed changes to the Historic District Commission and the Historic District proper. The ZAC is in the process of reviewing a draft of new zoning code. The chairman of the ZAC, Mark Erkline, has claimed that the content of the zoning code draft is the result of consultation with the pertinent stakeholders in the village. These include the Z D A, planning board, mayor, building inspector, and Historic District Commission. I'm here to state the fact that the H D C has had no input to this draft document. We have not been asked to provide input for this draft document, contrary to Chairman Matt Ekellein's statement during last Thursday's meeting. The mayor also claimed that a preliminary meeting had taken place with John Cromie, chair of the H D C. But this was in early April and only for the purpose of a village tour or the consultant, nothing having to do with the document in question. As a result, special interests within the village have seen to it in the draft document that the powers of the H D C have been stripped and Historic District, which has been in existence for forty years, has been eliminated. A copy of the proposed draft code has not even been made available to the members of the H D C to comment on the proposed changes. Effectively, the H D C has been shut out of the input and review process. I contend that the process, the rezoning is taking is flawed. Instead of drawing on the will of the people and the comprehensive plan, the process is being driven by special interests instead. I am concerned that our elected and appointed officials are not following appropriate steps to consult with the H D C. This is not a transparent process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let me go to Zoom real quick. Yeah, I realized we have the two hands up there right now. Go ahead. Well, seeing that Liz Biddles here, I'm gonna assume that's not Biddle.
Yes. Liz Cormos, eighty-nine hind. I'd also like to address some aspects of the zoning advisory committee. Zoning affects every single property owner in this village. The ZAC's meetings have been and are public and all materials have been available to the public up until the release of this draft mentioned by Gary that contained major chapters that had not been discussed by members of the ZAC. These sections were apparently presented to the consultant to incorporate into this draft as what the village wanted. The ZAC charter states, ZAC records shall be available to the village at any time, including for production to the public upon request. The chair of the ZAC committee, Matt Erkeline, stated recently, it's under the Google, in, in comment to where, where the draft could be seen. It's under the ZAC Google Drive, which anybody can access. We have read, write access. Everyone else on the public will have read access. So everyone can see the document and can see what we're doing. Transparency is essential to the rezoning process. Transparency is stated in the charter and was committed to by the chair and should be continued. Thank you.
Christine, are you there?
I just help me understand this. I've just been watching this and since I have had this October tenth meeting in my calendar for months and months, I have not been able for various reasons to attend the other meetings of the ZAC, but it, on, on to what circumstances do these? It happened so quickly. Why are we changing? Who is, who is dictating that this meeting goes from October tenth to October fifteenth? And we're changing all of our board meetings around and we've got motions and now we've got a communication problem? I have been pushing this ten-ten meeting as, as much as possible. So now we have a whole new, this, this, and I'm listening to Marilyn talk about this this consultant who seems to me to be clearly in breach of his contract. So what is being done about that? And finally, I have a concern that these things are going to be presented and these kinds of suggestions or thoughts should be available to the public well in, in advance of the meeting. And I don't mean twenty-four hour, twenty-four hours before, I mean forty. I mean, several days before the public really, in order to, this is going to be a very intense meeting whenever it happens. And there's going to be a lot that, that people are being asked to take in. I want to know, you know, so that people should have access to some of this beforehand. There should be copies for those people who may be visually impaired because, who will not be able to be looking at, at things on boards. You know, that are, and getting in everybody else's way as you take a close look at it. Are there going to be handouts? It doesn't seem to me that this, this consultant is meeting their obligations. I, I mean, I, I appreciate your attempt to be flexible, but this is, it's it's just very surprising to me that all of a sudden, every, everything gets turned around just because this particular individual doesn't, I, I, that's what it sounded like. So maybe somebody can help me understand why this meeting is being changed and who changed it and why the village is so willing to jump through hoops in order to make accommodations for this. When this meeting, I mean, this meeting on October tenth for the public has been set in, in stone, I thought, for at least six months. Thank you.
The ZAC made the change at their meeting on Thursday. The ZAC itself. Just to be clear. Okay, oh yes, there, Ray, do you still want to go?
Ray Allen, 60, Middleworth Avenue. Couple of things. The triangle at the north end of town. I want to let everybody know that through the generosity of the Business Association, the Volso Spa Rotary, and your mayor, we will have over 300 bulbs that will be spring flowering bulbs going in there. Hopefully in the next couple of weeks. Depends on when, really, it's done. Or me, or whoever else is going to work. If anybody's available to work on that, let me know. You know where I live. Secondly, I'm glad to see that we're moving ahead with the stop sign at Saratoga Avenue. As luck would have it, today I was coming through there, as I do several times a week, and I almost witnessed a tragedy with a young blond-haired girl walking across the street, black pants, white top, white shoes. She was walking across there in the crosswalk and somebody came around from Norton Avenue area and just buzzed through and just missed her. I mean, just missed her. She hadn't moved back. So that stop sign is much needed and it's been said before, it's a dangerous intersection that people don't always notice. One other thing, I remember a while ago, had to be a couple of years now, there was a lot of discussion by this board or whoever was on the board at the time concerning the curfew in the village for teenagers. And it was because it affected, you know, somebody on the board directly. But I haven't heard anything since that we've had incidents where there were more problems, that there was incidents, you know, once a week, or that there's not been any other incidents. And I was just looking for some kind of an update.
I've heard of no incidents, Ray, to be honest with you.
And it's just curious to me.
I think COVID has really changed the nighttime scenario in a large portion of our country and especially our area, that places that used to be open limitless or, you know, till midnight now. Let's go back to our hours very early to 10 o'clock or something like that. And so it's definitely changed, I think, the entire equation and has not really put the curfew well into play beyond those someone break it. But I've not heard anything specifically that suggests any kind of major problem here with respect to it.
There was just a lot of passion about it.
Well, yeah, I've actually reached out to Chief Bush. I spent several months last time, but a couple of times asked him if he had could compile any data associated with it. And I didn't hear back, so my assumption was there was no data.
Karen of the Nereus, Teddy's tie. Just to talk about, I've been to some of the online zoning board for the ZAC committee. It's kind of hard to hear when you're online, what's going on. I wasn't able to attend this last one because I had an open house to attend to. So if it is available to public, I know we would love to see it. I'm sure a lot of people would love to see it. Just to be able to read it, it sounds like it's a pretty big document. I mean, I know it was with the April meeting. And just so people can digest it, it would be great to be able to see it before I show up on the 15th. Me personally, I'm sure others would too. But thank you for all of the work that's going into it. I know a lot of people who volunteer a lot of time. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Seeing no hands, seeing nothing on Zoom. It is not for other business included but not limited to for response to public comment. By me, I want to read an email from Chris. Not that he needs to be defended here, but I just, for full transparency, Matt had or Chris actually, no, Matt had pushed this over me after Chris sent it over because he knew I was interested in this question ultimately. Thanks, Matt. I want to provide some additional thoughts. It sounds like there are some misplaced expectations regarding my involvement in ZAC meetings and thus I want to try to clear that up and also provide context that may be helpful. In terms of context, this process involves the spot and Zach's role is atypical in many ways, especially for a zoning project. I'm doing my best to be flexible with that, but as Matt noted, it needs to be done within the confines and scope and budget. Here are some of these differences from other projects. First, the ZAC is more heavily involved than any other of my projects. In other projects, the committee as a whole responds to certain aspects or certain individuals, provide more detailed comments based on their role. For example, comparing the public workshop. In another project, I received some minor comments on various boards and most comments focused on the draft zoning map. I believe everything that was covered in an hour of discussion. The second example relates to the current draft of the zoning code. As I noted previously, I would expect the vast majority of comments of the current draft to come from the planning board and ZDA, other than a couple of specific topics such as the Historic Commission. Perhaps related to the above, another key difference relates to the ZAC meetings themselves. Out of the approximately 10 projects I'm currently managing, this is the only one where the committee meets at this level of frequency and with meeting times all set in advance. For my other three similar zoning projects, the committee is meeting a total of approximately eight times for the entire duration of the project. The committees meet at key times based on certain interim work projects or products. By my count, including the upcoming 10-3 meeting, I'm already at seven committee meetings in Volso Spa. For all of my other projects, we had blocked out general timeframes for meetings, but then take it step by step, which allows flexibility and ensures the timing works for all parties. Finally, my understanding of the process is that the ZAC is one of the key stakeholder bodies providing input, but not the only stakeholder providing direction. The members have different understandings of the ZAC's role that I think this needs to be clarified first internally among the group. Chris Kuchel. So just want that out there because obviously we're talking a lot about the situation and I think it's fair to at least give Chris his take on it before we move further here on comments and thoughts. Who would like to go? Anything else? I see my front of my lot.
Yes, so that's great to hear from Chris. That's perspective. I do feel like, as I said last time, I feel like he's been put in the backseat a little bit and others are driving the bus of this zoning process. I wish he was more in charge and really structuring the process and and the law itself. Before I forget, the contract, you know, we're paying about 20, over $20,000 for community input in this contract. It includes two workshops. So I've only heard talk about this one, but the ZAC should really be thinking about a two-workshop process. And when is the next one? We're way behind, you know, there's an initial timeline in the contract. This group is way behind that timeline. You know, Chris didn't even meet the, he signed the contract in January, he didn't even meet the committee until April. So there's been delay after delay. That's not necessarily his fault. But we do need to start talking about a second workshop, which is in the contract that we're paying for. I'm gonna repeat what some others have said, that ZAC records must be made available per the Charter. The Charter requires that they are public. They are not. It's not up to the Chair to determine whether or not they are public. That Charter has been in place from, since before the Chair was on the board. And there's a reason why these documents are public. Because this is a very important process for the public. It's a public process and these documents are public. I understand that certain early drafts, it makes sense not to widely distribute perhaps as the, you know, the... I can sympathize when we made the motion to put the draft on the website, that maybe it was premature to put it on the website, but it should be public so that anyone can go in at any time and just look at what the ZAC is doing with the public's business. And and that is very important for transparency and good government. And I will repeat that one of the issues that I'm very alarmed about with this current draft is that the planned development districts have no restrictions on them whatsoever currently, as far as I can see. It looks like they can be of any size, anywhere, for any use, anywhere in the village. And that effectively hands a lot of control over to the Rossi administration, including himself and the planning board and zoning board people he appoints. And so that is very alarming to me. As well as combined with this phrase that has been added in the zoning that the mayor can remove planning board or zoning board members specifically for, quote, "any conduct tending to cast doubt upon integrity or objectivity of a member in performing their duties" or "for any other specific conduct of a member found by the mayor to be detrimental to the proper function of the board," unquote. So that's very open-ended and gives the mayor a huge amount of power. So I am very concerned that this is a transfer of power from actual zoning to individuals who can have great flexibility in what they are enabled to do. And it's the only way to counter that is for the public to say that you don't approve, that you would prefer a different direction, something with more in the zoning itself to protect this village's quality of life. So so that's why I support for these documents to be public so that we can provide feedback to the ZAC. Feedback does not interfere with the ZAC's business. It actually contributes. Nobody's stopping the ZAC from doing whatever they want. This, you all have the ability and the right to provide feedback. And so I encourage everyone to go to the October 15th meeting and provide that feedback. Again, it's meant to be a higher level vignette kind of approach with posters, not feedback specifically on the draft itself. Maybe that will happen at the next workshop. We'll see. All right, that's it for now. Thank you.
Is that statement intended to replace the statement you made two weeks ago or is that in addition to that statement?
Why are you asking that question?
I'm asking a question.
I think it's I think it's a statement that stands on its own.
So the statement two weeks ago, you're not replacing it in any way, shape, or form.
Well, I guess I'm rearticulating. Is there something you'd like me to retract from last week?
You were asked to in an email, I do know.
All right, let's say this statement replaces the last statement. That's fine.
Thank you. A couple of things though that you didn't seem to get from the email is the stuff about how to remove members of the planning board or zoning board is essentially akin to what the state law currently is in state village code for that purpose. So essentially, he took those probably from state codes, modified them to give cause because it's not well-defined cause in the state code. And so he basically said, "Here, village, here is the state code with some better language related to it. Now do what you please with it." Okay, so that's just unfortunately, you know, the way it usually works here. PDD, same thing here. From what I can tell, after looking at this, it's a generic PDD code he put out there. And he doesn't realize that when we were, Renee and I coming into office, you were already considering a PDD that was modified and that went especially nowhere, but we do have a draft of it that might be informative to him as of that point in time. But where we were with the PDD code, that I think we were kind of resorted in position where it was almost passable in certain points.
Are you talking about the one that Nishan and Liz put together or some other PDD?
No, I... Yeah, we did a three-board, yeah, we did a three-board meeting. Remember that? So there is something we could provide it, Chris. I didn't know it was even relevant at the time, but here, you know, we could give it to them to say, hey, modify the PDD language more in accordance with this.
All right, now that'd be great because I am concerned, you know, he was told by an individual to take out whatever restrictions there were on the PDD to make it wide open. So yes, I think the that it would be good to have, whatever we were working on, I don't remember the specifics, but I'm sure it had some more guide rails than this, which doesn't have any guide rails.
As Carla's saying, I'm gonna reiterate what she's kind of saying quietly over here, it's first draft. There's a reason why it's a first draft and it changes multiple times. The other thing is this claim that the destruction of the Historic District. Oddly enough, my stance is that the Historic District should be the entire village. I don't know why it is one street in particular and a couple of other additional side streets that it qualifies as Historic District. And the other thing that has come out from this and people will, you know, guffaw at it all they want, but the definition of the word historic is problematic in the current version. And that needs to be modified and worked out in a certain way because what we see happening on that street clearly isn't working very well because there's no consistency on High Boulevard or, or on High Street. My God. Got High Boulevard in mind, but on High Street, on East High Street especially, that really shows us that it is working well. And so there's a modification clearly going on. I've seen his wording in there, "does not eliminate historic districts." It basically says, "The village board approves what a historic district does with the following ideas behind it." So it may destroy the idea that the current essence of a historic district commission or historic district is as it is standing, but I haven't talked to really many people that feel like it's working well in the current status or protecting everything it should be protecting in a historic village like ours. That was my stance on it. I made that clear sitting right in this room with Chris there, Marilyn and others that evening, as you remember. We were all here. I remember you kind of nodding. I think you were a little surprised at some of the things I was saying that night, that you weren't completely put off by some of the things I said. Because as I said, you know, we have a historic village we live in, yet we have a couple of streets that we are claiming is historic district. That doesn't work. And so how do we get to where we need to be for the entire village ultimately? And make sure that Shippo is happy with us in respect to that and everything else. And that's where Chris can come in and help guide us for that as well. So this notion of we're destroying a historic district isn't there. It's actually, we're trying to make it better.
Well, the...
Thank you, Gary.
I'm sorry. I'm not supposed to.
Yeah, well, you can, you can characterize it in different ways, but you know, if we're stripping the historic district law and its powers and eliminating the district as such, then that's pretty, you know, big change. I guess, I guess the issue that I'm concerned about is even though, you know, quote-unquote, "first draft," it seems pretty far from the comprehensive plan in many ways and has things that nobody's really talked about, that sort of came out of nowhere in some ways. And then also I'm concerned that the proper people haven't been involved in crafting even this first draft in terms of the committee as a whole in the Historic District for their piece to the extent that they would have liked. So that's where the concern, I understand it's going to change, but I feel like we're so far off to this, off the expected the expected course that it was alarming, but there's still time to obviously work on it and improve it. And it really needs, the process needs to remain public, of course. So, but yes, I'd be happy, you know, one thing I've been confused about is there is a special meeting we had with the planning board where, you know, you, Frank, and Rory and the board, we all voted to do an overlay on parts of the village that we were talking about, a PDD, and that has disappeared. Subsequent to that is like, why did, why were we even interested in that? No one's given me a reason. But but where is that gone, the overlay idea that was so popular a year ago?
To be honest, Ben, I think it's, we've got identifiable pieces of property that we don't know what the futures hold for them that are currently wrongly zoned or in trapped zoning right now. And so we can guess to the best of our abilities what the correct search would be for those properties, but we could be wrong. properties, but we could be wrong and we needed to have the flexibility. I think that's always been the idea with respect to all the discussion with this. And I was not, I don't know, Sean was saying you the other night, that it said, suggests something about, you know, using a certain land size for a PDD. Somebody said it on Thursday.
Typically, there are certain...
Five acres, four acres, something like that, yeah. Yeah, and I don't disagree with that either necessarily, or some other trigger of size or compilation, so that it's not a single half acre lot thinking a PDD would be appropriate. That's usually not what you do.
I'm glad to hear you say that, because that's...
Okay, but, but that's, you know, ask. You sat here and you threw all kinds of misinformation the last meeting about things that don't even exist in town of Ballston zoning, PDD's that don't even exist. And all you had to do was say, "Hey Frank, what do you think about this? I'm gonna say, yeah, I think it's a land size issue or other triggers that we can identify." And usually, or the starting point is, we know at least one, probably two, you look at Ricketts and the possibilities there too, and Angelica. These are the three definable mystery properties of what the future holds with them. We could all sit here and pretend we know it's gonna be the answer, but we don't know. And that's, those are the things where you have to provide the sufficient flexibility for those.
Right, so you say ask. I did, I did actually ask, and it actually alarmed me, because the answer was...
Did you ask me?
The answer was, I'm not gonna give names, because it'll...
But did you ask me?
The, this is the knowledge base I had. The answer was that Chris had size restrictions in for the BDD and someone, who, one person who was a leader of this process, told him to take them out.
Well, wasn't they?
So, I know, I know, I know who it was. And so, well, but there's someone who works with you, Frank. There's someone who works with you.
And that's fine.
So I'm just saying, that was my knowledge base. It's like, okay, there wasn't, there was size restriction. It was taken out by one person and Chris responded to this one person's direction. And so that process was alarming.
If, if it happened, that's all well and good, it's one person, it's in front of the ZAC, the ZAC can handle it there. If we disagree with it as a board, we can handle it at a later time once the ZAC hands it over to us. It doesn't need the more alarm player treatment that I think you, quoting you from last time gave it. And also, if you just simply asked me, who you think is the antichrist when it comes to PDD's and development issues and everything else, I would have basically echoed the same idea Sean did on Thursday, and I shook my head when he said it, because I agree with him, absolutely. It's size or some other trigger that makes sense, because you know that it may need flexibility in certain types of locations or land masses in those situations, but define those. That's all. And so, again, you don't ask, you sit here and you just throw the shade at this direction. It's like, why? You wanna say something? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to remind the board and the public, because I think it's getting a little murky, that this is not the proper time or place to discuss the specifics of the zoning code that's being drafted. And I say that because this, you created the zoning advisory committee to do justice. And you asked them to create the zoning, and they're doing that. And then to come, what'll happen is, once they provide it, I'm just telling the legal perspective, once the zoning advisory committee has what they believe to be a draft, they then present it to the board of trustees. At that time, the board of trustees, it's out of their hands and in your hands. And I did advise everybody this in email, but I just want the public to know, that's how this works. Like, they're the advisory committee, that's literally in their name. They go through their process, whatever it is. They present a product to this board. This board then goes through that entire product. You don't have to accept anything that they do. You can accept some, you can accept none, you can accept what you want. After this board then is comfortable with it, it goes to the public, like any other local law. It also goes to the planning board, it goes to the zoning board, it goes to the county planning board, to, to completely vet all of this. So I just want everybody to know that that's kind of the process, that, you know, this conversation, while instructive, it's not properly, it's not the proper time to have it, because you don't have what the final recommendation from the ZAC is gonna be.
And just on that note, still, informative will be people from the community coming out and giving their thoughts all along the way. And there will be multiple opportunities at the ZAC, correct? At the ZAC, thank you. But there will be multiple opportunities to do that all along the process, because not only do they in their meetings have, or in their meeting sets, will they have a workshop or two, depending on how this plays out, but also they allow public comment at the end of every meeting. And so utilize those situations. And, you know, that's all I can really say, urge the participation in that manner moving forward. The concern though, Ben, is I've never picked up a phone to talk to Chris. I don't care to pick up a phone and talk to Chris, because of what you just stated. You recently had a conversation, a 45-minute conversation, something like that, from what I understand with Chris. And for those that are worried about scope and budget issues, if you don't think that eats into scope and budget type situations, it does. And so we, I don't know why we are reaching out independently to the consultant, when we do have the ZAC in control of this consultant at this point in time. And if you have a concern, you, you know, send an email to Matt saying, "Hey, I've got a concern," and let him be the one that handles that concern. And if Matt has a concern that something's not being done, he will come back to us and say, "Hey, I, we need legal counsel to look at that contract and effectively handle that." That's the way this is supposed to work.
Yeah, and the reason that I've been so vocal and made that call is because of my impression that the process has been warped out of what it was supposed to be, and that the, the product, the first draft, was way off from what I was thinking, expecting. And so I think this is, the process went off track. And so that's a cause for concern that I felt needed to be articulated.
How long did town of Ballston's rezoning process, that I think you spectated on, last?
Well, it, it seems to be something that was ongoing for some time. It did not include a committee.
But it took how long you moved out of committee?
Well, they, they had a moratorium, as you know, so that was over a year. And then they continued after that as well.
Yeah, it was well over.
Yeah, it's a completely different process.
Well, it was about two years.
But that's why I said, I...
I'm not discussing shade on Ballston, but just reality check for comparable nearby is that, and that's where it went. So, go ahead.
Yeah. I think the, the issue, from, from what I can see and what I've gleaned from information is that the ZAC, and I agree with Carla, ZAC should be handling this. However, there's members of the ZAC that were completely unaware of this language going in a document. And that should never happen. And, you know, the consultant should be made aware that all ZAC members need to see it, review it, provide comment, and whatever the majority of the ZAC thinks, then be modified before it goes into a document. It seems like there was kind of a cart before the horse here, that, you know, Chris, Chris put in stuff from one or two individuals without getting complete ZAC approval before that went into the document.
But Sean, it's a 125-page document I'm looking at right here, 125 pages. The ZAC isn't writing that, okay? It's the consultant taking some of the beginning recommendations, saying, "Hey, ZAC, here's a document, now go through it, give me the comments, give me the thoughts, give me concerns, et cetera." And some folks in the audience, in particular, have much, how many times have they gone through this process themselves?
It's not, not necessarily the consultant, the individuals who basically did an in-around of ZAC should be told to give, that's not proper, that's not how the charter works. And you, whatever ideas you may have, you need to float it in front of the entire ZAC before you give it to the consultant. And that's not, that's not happening, and that's why this has become such a big deal.
Not for nothing, we had a board member have a 45-minute conversation with Matt. Who knows what he gave him to put in or not put in?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you what my message to Chris was. My message was that if you have changed, first of all, I told him I don't envy his situation, because he's stuck between multiple stakeholders here being squeezed. But that if he has changes to zoning or proposals or language, to do it within the context of the committee, to not take individual members' feedback and go with that, but to do everything within the context of the committee. And that was my advice to him.
Exactly, please.
Well, that's exactly what he should be doing.
I think at the end of all of this, I believe the ZAC committee is going to review the draft.
I hope so.
That is, that's what we asked them to do before they send us anything. So, you know, there, apparently there's some stuff that maybe some folks don't like that should be voiced then. I think it's impossible to write a whole code and, you're gonna write some of it according to what's available out in other communities and through this man's experience in writing other codes. And then, yeah, send it to the ZAC. Each of you get to say, yes, you do. Each of you get to say, and you make comments on it. So I'm looking forward to when you guys do review that and, you know, certainly the public comment portion, and, you know, kind of getting to hear what the folks are gonna say. I did have a question about that. Is that gonna be taped or anything?
I'm sure we'll find a way to do it. I've gotta see what their ultimate setup's gonna look like, and we can figure out a way to manage that ultimately.
Well, it will be throughout the room, so it may be hard, it's not gonna, every station won't be taped.
Sure.
His presentation, I'm sure, or could be taped.
There'll be upfront sessions though, and then probably send off a part of the session as well. So, anyway, anybody else have anything? Mary, I feel like we've left you out of this, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify a letter you sent two days, a couple of days ago, Frank. So I made some comments about this process, and you sent a very threatening letter. And could you just explain the content of that letter? And what you are talking with?
I think, yeah, well, Ben, our ethics code states that we must be truthful. I spotted, I took a transcript of your entire statement from the last meeting and showed you where there was less than truthful statements at the best, and asked you to revise it, or you'd be in violation of ethics code.
And you threatened to, what, take me to the district attorney for something, or to remove me from this position? What else are you threatening me with?
So would you like me to read the entire thing? We're gonna go to that part?
Actually, it wouldn't be bad for people to see the level of threat that Frank visits upon people when he doesn't like their opinions. I think this is a first, a free speech, First Amendment issue. Carla, I'd be interested in your opinion of his letter as well, and how appropriate it was, and whether it was overly and inappropriately threatening to another board member.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, you hadn't seen it?
I didn't say that. I said, "I don't know what you're talking about." Have you given a date or a time, or how it was, it was a letter, an email?
You don't know the letter I'm talking about? Was it Sunday? Frank, you don't?
I try not to work on the weekends.
No, it was a Tuesday. Oh, a Tuesday. Number 17, is that the one you're looking at?
Oh, I have an icon. Carla was having a brief time there. I was learning things about...
She said, she sent me a wish you were here text.
So I don't need you to read the whole thing, but if you want to, you can, and then you can explain...
You want, you want me to read the front part? Because I've explained the back part already.
Actually, it's the part where you're referring me to the district attorney and you're threatening to, to do some, to have some legal procedure, to, is it going to be to kick me off the, the board? Or what is, what are you implying exactly, based on the fact that I made some statements about the zoning?
It wasn't statements about the zoning.
About the process.
Ben, I'd like to address two separate sets of issues, based on your behavior at the last board meeting and the content of your statements at and since that meeting. First is a threshold matter, your behavior in emails to our volunteer committee chair and our legal counsel is reprehensible at best.
And that's what he's talking, that's his language all the time to me. You should, I'm glad you're hearing this, because that's his language. That's how he treats fellow board members. Go ahead. I gotta make comments, as you go.
No, you won't be.
Yeah, I will.
Because you'll be interrupted, you can do it. Motion to adjourn, and what, we do your audit vouchers at 8:24 PM? Trustee Fandanza, trustee Bryce Bush, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries. She and I both... I saw that.